We convene, do we need to do the roll? Okay, please call the roll.
Saltzman.
Here.
Novick.
Here.
Fritz. I'm here and I'll just add it's 10:00 PM on the time that I was on yesterday, so if I nod off just wait.
Yes.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Hales.
Here. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, Council, for covering this morning and welcome back.
Welcome back to you, too.
Thank you. We have a single item on the council calendar this afternoon, it's item 889, would you, so two items, 887 and 888, sorry, let me get synchronized, 887, 888, would you please read 887?
887, adopt the Powell Division Transit and Development Project Portland Local Action Plan.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, and welcome. You gonna start, Joe?
Yes, I will. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Councilors. I'm Joe Zenter, Chief Planner for Bureau Planning and Sustainability, and today, Carl, if you could flip us on, we're to, here to present the Portland Local Action Plan, Community Development and Transportation Improvement Action Plan, that's a piece of the Portland Division High Capacity Transit Project. That project, that bigger overarching transit project, is a partnership with Metro and TriMet, Cities of Gresham, Cities of Portland, and it's to improve transit in a corridor where there's a lot of transit-dependent households and a large, large amount of transit use. It's to improve access, the places it links are centers of employment and education and services, and the main piece we're talking about today is to support equitable community development. So, the way the presentation's going today is, we're gonna start with Metro Councilor Bob Stacy to introduce sort of Metro's point of view, and Metro is the overall leader of this phase of the project, and Bob is co-chair of the Steering Committee. After that, I'll be joined by Kurt Krieger and Kate Dean, and we'll present the particulars of the plan. After that, we're ready for Q and A, and there's also some invited testimony.
I have that here. Great, thank you. Counselor Stacy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to reassure Commissioner Fish that what I told him before the proceedings began, that Metro and the City of Portland are partners in this project, we're not the leaders, or ascended above the City of Portland in some way, I sincerely believe that. This, the grabbing of my remarks today will be that the Powell Division Project, or the Division Corridor, as we're now focusing on increasingly, is a very important transportation investment, but in terms of the excitement and possibility and importance of the planning effort overall, this would be a much less significant project if it weren't for the significant leadership being shown by the City of Portland in the Portland Action Plan. I want to first acknowledge that in addition to Commissioner Novick and me, there are other members of the Steering Committee on the, on the corridor project here today, my colleague Counselor Shirley Craddock, District One Metro Counselor, who actually represents significantly more of the project corridor than I do, including two and a half miles inside the city limits of Portland. This is a long and important corridor for, for transportation generally, and for transit in particular. In addition, we have two citizen members of the Steering Committee, Ken Marx, who represents East Portland Neighborhoods in the East Portland Action Plan, and Vivian Satterfield, who I believe is representing Apano and the Jade District and Opal to varying degrees, but she's representing the community, which is the important point. Unlike past transit projects and community building projects in this region, Powell Division is a unique partnership of the regional agencies, TriMet, Metro, ODOT, the cities of Portland and Gresham, and community representatives selected to ensure that the views of neighborhoods of minorities and community members throughout the corridor would be reflected in the decision-making process that leads to a decision on transit and on the other elements. That partnership has been very pivotal in the development of this corridor, including about two years ago, citizen members of the Steering Committee bringing forward a key issue that was on the radar screen but wasn't incorporated into the work program of Metro, or I'll dare say, to some extent, the City of Portland, the concern about displacement of businesses and low-income households whenever significant public improvements are made in an area, particularly improvements that provide additional access to jobs and other amenities. That's in many people's minds an unalloyed good, we're providing more access to people, to jobs, and daily needs. At the same time, if we're making this area more desirable for investment, we have the prospect of pushing out existing businesses and households. It was community members that brought that forward. Metro, thanks to my colleague Sam Chase and the Council, has moved in the direction of developing its own strategies about what we call equitable housing, and I believe the City of Portland is among other cities applying for a $500,000 pot of resources to do housing planning in response to some of the new tools that the city has already picked up and started using and that other communities in the region can use, like the construction excise tax, like the inclusionary zoning approach. But those, those ideas started with, with the citizen members, who said, "We need strategies," and the City of Portland stepped forward in the form of Joe, who started convening people and, and the Bureau, and PBOT, and PDC, and Housing, to put together strategies that make sense for this corridor and that are outlined in the Portland Action Plan. So, yes, the Division Corridor will be a transportation lifeline that will connect this whole southeast area much better with more frequent service, with better buses that are longer but not wider on inner division, just the same width, that will be able to move more people on each trip, that will reduce the number of passed-by passengers in close-in division, and, and make the, the speed of the movement through the entire corridor better for East Portland and Gresham residents. And it'll, it'll deal with, with capacity issues and the need for more, more transit service in that area. But fundamentally, it's making real progress in areas that the city and the region need to progress toward, toward ensuring that there are places where people can live as areas become more prosperous, that the supply of affordable housing and the opportunities to stay in a community rather than be displaced from it are increased as we make strategic public investments. So, my hat is off to the city. I know you'll continue to be engaged in, in the planning process and ultimately the implementation of a bus rapid transit line in southeast Portland, but you'll also be leading the way in terms of making this, this project ever more valuable to the region as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Counselor Stacy or for Joe? Great, great. Thank you both. We're gonna hear from, yeah, we're gonna hear from, we're gonna hear from, I think, Counselor Craddock and, and from the Housing Bureau, and then also from our Steering Committee members who are here.
Right, so the, the next phase of this, I'll have, unless Counselor Craddock wants to address, it will be Kurt Krieger and Kate Dean will join me, and we'll go through the particulars of the plan.
Okay.
Let's do that. Thank you.
Counselor Craddock has the prerogative whenever she wants to jump up and say, "Wait a minute, you forgot this."
So, the part of the plan that we're focusing on today is the part related to housing development, affordable housing development, and economic development, community economic development. And the overview of the pieces of the plan, or the actions that are included in the plan is shown on this slide, on the housing side of the strategy. The overall point is to get more and to get better affordable housing in the corridor, and as Counselor Stacy pointed out, when we did the displacement or gentrification risk analysis a few years ago as part of the comprehensive plan, the south side of Powell and all of Division popped out as a high-risk area, given the characteristic, the income and the renters and the other characteristics of the households there. So, even before there was a high-capacity transit project, we knew that this was a part of the city where we needed to pay attention to that issue. So, in vis-à-vis of housing, we've got three overall actions. One is to increase the supply, and, and just for context, too, we wrote this, we were asked to write the local action plan as if a five-year plan, so this is looking at the things that we think we can get accomplished by 2022. Add 300 affordable units in the corridor. The 300 number is not necessarily reflected of the overall need of affordable housing in the city or in this corridor, however, part of what we needed to do is to make this in proportion to the size of the transit project and the sense that we have of what the impact would be. We thought that was a more reasonable way to sort of set this particular goal. Other goals are set citywide that you've already heard in the comprehensive plan and other work that Housing's brought forward. So, the goal is 300 units. Coupled with that, we have a project that we're gonna get underway at BPS about creating better multi-dwelling standards. So, you know the apartment buildings, especially that you see out east, out in East Portland on some of the lots, and their design need to be improved to benefit the, the households who live in those units more, and we're moving to evaluate and improve those standards. So, overall, we hope that the multi-dwelling, the apartment buildings out in East Portland elsewhere in the city will be better designed and will carry over into the affordable housing units as well, market rate and affordable. Finally, on the housing part of the strategy, is, and this came clearly through the messages given us by the Steering Committee and the advocacy groups in East Portland, was that there was a need for stronger tenant protections. Having good units, having more units is one thing, but protecting the rights of those in those units is another, and so the point of this action is just to really continue the work that the Housing Bureau and others have already started in that regard. On the economic development side, and the main, the overall message, or the point of this piece of the strategy, is we want to make sure that the businesses and the households that are currently in this corridor are able to take advantage of the benefits that come from introducing better transit. We know that the households and are going to benefit from the transit because it will perform better and they're, they already are heavy transit users. If there's displacement of either the business, as there is displacement of the businesses and/or residents, that benefit to those folks becomes more threatened. So, on the economic development side, we really focused on business retention and getting businesses in, in the position to take advantage of growth and also workforce opportunities for households and residents in the corridor. The tools that you see listed here, business retention, connect, workforce navigation, sort of development assistance is what help development means, it's classic sort of real estate work, and having this be a community-driven planning and action effort are really tools from the PDC's tool, PDC's approach that they've been using in the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative areas, the NPI areas. So, part of this is bringing it to scale, using that toolkit that we've been developing, or PDC's been developing with the community, and trying to bring it to scale to affect businesses outside the NPIs in the corridor. So, that's the overall actions. Funding is the next piece of this to see it through, so we've estimated the amount of money it takes for the 300 units and the other pieces of action, and to bring, increase the access or the ability to deliver those business services and workforce services in the corridor, and the estimates came out to be 33 million for the housing piece, 6 million for the economic development activities. The housing work is primarily implemented by Housing Bureau, the economic development work is implemented by PDC and their community partners.
Do we have the agreements of the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative, that they're going to dedicate a million dollars of their money?
Well, Kate's here to address that part of the overall, what this really represents. So, we wanted to show also, with the adoption of this plan, what resources do we have to get together to get going? On the, the housing side, and Kurt will address this in more detail, when we prepared the plan, we thought we had about that, that amount of money, this is $7 million, that we would have access, and a half million dollars we'd have access to, there's still a $26 million gap to get to the finish line, and Kurt can address our ideas about getting to that. On the, the, and you'll notice that in here is some money from centrally side that's already sort of dedicated to housing, so we're counting that as part of this, Housing Bureau money that they can reprogram or that could be focused over there in current sort of programs, and then Metro in their community planning and development grant is actually helping with this effort, and we're taking that money, and it's not so much planning this time as we're actually trying to go out and do these actions, get started. On the economic development side, there's the TIF money that's in the NPIs that Kate can talk about, the activities that are, only can be spent within the NPI geography, but it's similar activities. Once again, there's some Metro money from a community planning and development grant, and there's some general fund that is allocated to PDC for this kind of work. Still to be funded on the economic development side is 4.3 million. So, if we're gonna follow through, we needed to, the next sort of parts of the presentation show how we get from the start funding that we have to be able to deliver the actions, and so to talk about this and to talk about, you know, more fully, what opportunities that we see in the corridor, I'd like to turn it over first to Kurt and then to Kate.
Very good, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. It gives me great pleasure to come to you today and not ask for new resources. In taking stock of this plan, I think it's worth mentioning that Matthew Scheibald and Carl Denkelspiel from the Housing Bureau were part of the initial conceptualization of the fiscal note and the number, and between the time that number was developed and the time that we've come to you, frankly, we've been able to put a lot of tools in place. The securitization of the transit lodging tax into some general fund-backed bonds gives us resources outside of urban renewal areas to make purchase offers on property. We are actively pursuing sites in this corridor and have made some, issued letters of intent to acquire some properties. We're not prepared yet to disclose what they are, but they are in this particular study area. Moreover, with the action you've taken to implement a construction excise tax, August 1st, will start to accumulate not just the offset funding for developers to comply with inclusionary zoning, but additional resources that can be used in this particular area. As mentioned, we have existing tax increment within the construct of the urban renewal areas, and you appropriated some $500,000 for our rental rehab program. That's really a, an initial start on a robust rental rehab program. If you recall, the request was for 1.5 million, assuming we're able to launch, that program will come back in the normal budget process for a full funding. That was consistent with the East Portland Action Program's goals. So, I'm thinking frankly that we have the tools at our disposal for us to fill this gap in the next five years. The, real estate is always opportunity-driven, and we need to focus our resources and our attention on this area to make sure that we avail ourselves of those opportunities, but I wanted to let you know that I think we have the tools necessary to, to meet this goal.
So, you won't be coming back to ask for additional resources?
I don't expect to. The Council, of course, will have to approve any acquisition of, of real estate in due time, and we'll, we'll come in each instance for that. The, the, the resources that we would normally have available at our disposal in the next five years should allow us to fulfill this goal.
So, could you possibly, because with the chart we just saw, it said that there was nearly $27 million of unmet need, unmet, that is not specified, how come we don't have that broken down into where you think that money's going to come from?
Well, the, the, you know, we, our annual budget is $153 million, as, as approved by Council, and of course, we're a citywide bureau serving lots of different areas. This area is a large geographic area, and as we calibrate our, our resources, we obviously are working within the eight open urban renewal areas, this, this corridor includes two of those eight, Lanson Gateway, which is helpful, but, but moreover, it, it is large enough that we think we can find opportunities within this area in the next five years to place 300 affordable housing units in the area. We don't budget specifically by allocating resources because it is so driven by opportunities. What I can tell you is that we are really at the present time only shopping for real estate in the interstate urban renewal area and in this corridor. If the Tiger City Council votes affirmatively to support the southwest corridor, I think we'll redouble our efforts in the southwest corridor as well.
I would still like to see more of a framework for which buckets you are looking to get that nearly $27 million from.
I think as a planning tool, I'm perfectly supportive of that. What we, what we can't do is budget in that manner because we obviously don't want to leave money on the table, we need to deploy our resources in a timely manner and make sure that we meet our goals, but I, I don't have a problem with, with giving you a roadmap as to how we would deploy those resources.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like a framework for, you think that, and of course, not project by project, but how much of the construction excise tax do you think will be dedicated to this area? How much of the other resources that you mentioned will be, you know, what's, what's, what are the buckets and where are they coming from? Thank you.
Be happy to.
Kurt, let me, let me follow up on that if I could. Is your goal to have 300 new units of affordable housing, or is preservation part of your strategy?
Of, well, this plan calls for 300 new units. We plan on, in addition, stabilizing the current stock to the greatest extent possible.
And when you talk about 300 affordable units, if you were successful tomorrow in achieving that goal, what would be the income distributions?
Well, I think it's gonna be 100% below 60% of AMI, 100% would be low income. The, I must say that there are a lot of mobile home parks in this area, and those tend to be even lower income than that. We are looking at preservation that includes mobile home parks as well as existing apartment complexes.
We've, we've mentioned this before, but I hope soon we identify a mobile home park that the city can take its entire toolkit to bear, because one of the things I'd like to see is BES, BPS, Housing, all of our key partners at the table, taking a mobile home park, reimagining it with updated units, and then greening it up, so that we can show what a, what a different kind of, of environment we can create in a mobile home context while preserving affordability. And let, and let me just ask you a tougher question. So, you're, you're committing a half million dollars over, excuse me, $500,000 over five years from your federal funds, so that's new money that you're carving out of the money we get from the feds, but you're crediting 5 million from an urban renewal district, why isn't that old wine in a new bottle?
Well, I think actually the $500,000, as I understand this chart, is in terms of sources, is actually the rental rehab general fund commitment. It's not, it's not federal dollars. I believe it's general fund dollars.
The, the, the chart that we have at page 28 says PHB federal fund allocation over five years, a half million dollars.
Well, let me double-check on that, we...
I'm not on the chart, so if it, I'm, if it isn't that fun, it, I, that's fine, I just...
Yeah, and it's, as Kurt said, it's a deployment of a source of funds that Housing Bureau has to focus on this quarter, so let me double-check the source.
But since we already have money budgeted in urban old districts and we have a strategy, why isn't this old wine in a new bottle if we're crediting TIF within centrally side?
Well, it may, it may be a difference without a distinction. I'm not sure I'm fully tracking you, but indeed...
It's, it, I'm, I'm being provocative, obviously, but the money in the urban renewal district predated a strategy for this quarter, and we have, and we've been thinking about how to spend that money. Now you've got a vision for a corridor, and you're talking about new investment to address the housing needs, so, I mean, you're, you're adding this to the mix, but this is a pre-existing commitment we made to do housing within that urban renewal district, so someone might argue, well, you, that five is already in the mix, come up with an additional five. Why is it, why are you suggesting that we, we essentially credit an existing allocation within an urban renewal district of TIF that was otherwise targeted to creating this housing before we had this strategy?
But the, the way that we came up with the goal and sort of were thinking of this is sort of an end state, what can be on the ground with the completion of the high-capacity transit project? So, this is part of that mix of units, granted that there is a set aside, it's coming from an urban renewal area that already exists, but that money could be spent on the corridor, centrally side is a big area, it could be spent outside the corridor in the centrally side. The site that we've been talking about is particularly, is, is a site that will be where the bus rapid transit intersects, or at least comes in the vicinity of the white rail, so it's a major sort of transfer point, so we think it's a opportune site for affordable housing.
You're targeting it, so that, just, and then my final question is, does that displace any other affordable housing commitments or priorities that the district had previously put on the table that we're now shifting to this, this focus?
It does not.
Any other questions? Other points you wanted to cover, Kurt? Very good. Thank you. Kate?
Thanks. Kate Dean, Portland Development Commission, I'm the Community Economic Development Manager. I'm here today to talk a little bit about the economic development portions of the action plan. The slide that you see before you, as we really looked at the transit project coming through, what we've tried to do in the economic development portion of this plan is to really anchor our economic development actions around the existing NPI areas in the Division Corridor, and the focus of the plan is really between 82nd Avenue and approximately 174th, where the City of Portland meets Gresham in this corridor. So, the idea would be, you're well aware, I think, of the investments that City Council currently makes in the Jade District and in the Division Midway, so through City Council investments of general fund on an annual basis... investments of general fund on an annual basis, we're able to fund those two districts, including one staff person in each of those districts to manage the district, to know all the businesses, to, you know, work with the community, to identify needs, and really to drive local economic development. So our vision here is that we have this infrastructure that the city already has made, and that if we, and in addition to that, other existing resources that we are putting in place right now include business technical assistance. So again, the city works with PDC to fund business technical assistance focused on, primarily on low-income and/or minority-owned businesses. We have worked to layer those resources within our NPIs. To a great extent, we have, in both of these districts, we have on-the-ground business advising on a walk-in basis. That's more, I would say, light touch. And then for those businesses that need more than a light touch on business technical assistance, like, I need some help with marketing, or can you look at my website, or how do I, you know, where do I go to get this from the city? We have ongoing business technical assistance that we also provide, that people can receive up to three years of business technical assistance. So we're trying to layer our existing programs within the NPI areas. So what the plan does, and what we've started even this fiscal year with a grant from Metro, we've got a grant from Metro, the way that we're using that grant in large part is, is to enhance our business technical assistance in the corridor. So we're serving the entire corridor, not just NPIs, although it will sort of be focused through the NPIs, will be kind of home bases. So we're going to double down on our business technical assistance. That means that more people can receive longer-term business technical assistance than we have with the base city funding. We are also helping to fund a community organizer. So one of the things that occurs when you have a major project that comes through an area is that there's a lot of public outreach that's needed. And up to this point, a lot of the burden or blessing of that public involvement has really fallen on the NPIs. And so one of the things we're doing with the Metro Grant, and that we think we need to sustain over time, is to have a community organizer so that, that much of the outreach and community connection to the transit project and to business technical assistance and to some of the workforce development services that we hope to put in this corridor can really be, we can have a community organizer who's out on the front line, make, developing relationships and making connections with individual residents and businesses, and making sure that they get to the appropriate, you know, business technical advisors, workforce advisors, and learning about what's happening with the transit project, when meetings are coming up, when significant community input is needed, hosting meetings.
Where would that organizer be housed?
We anticipate that we will house them through the NPIs. Though we have one right now, we're kind of knitting together resources that we are putting first in Division Midway because they have slightly less capacity than Jade does with the broader resources of Apoно at this point. But I think we would see this as a resource for the corridor and something that would be shared between the two as we move beyond.
Would there be any merit, do you think, to house that position at Venture Portland?
I mean, it's certainly something we could consider. I think the reason that we are suggesting that we would put this in the community-based organizations is that they're just frankly closer to the people, and that this really is, it's a more of a community development role. It's not specifically about businesses. It's as much about connecting residents and businesses to the transit project as it goes along, connecting businesses to business technical assistance, and back to the districts and to the business associations in the corridor, and finally, connecting residents up to some of the workforce development services that are there. So it's certainly something that we could consider. I think our proposal and recommendation would be that we funnel it through the NPIs. The transit project has really developed a very nice relationship with the two NPIs in terms of the outreach and the community connections.
Is the other virtue of, I didn't, I don't remember the numbers on the chart, but is another virtue of running it through an NPI that you can use TIF?
No.
Are we talking general fund?
We're talking general fund at this point.
But where is that coming from?
Which?
The additional money for the community organizer.
Well, right now, where the money is coming from, I mentioned that we have a Metro Grant.
Right.
So a large part of that is coming from that. And then PDC gives some resources to the district in terms of E-zone funding for, for technical assistance, and we had a little bit of carryover of that. And so we're sort of, this year, we're knitting this particular position together to kind of jumpstart that, that work in the corridor.
Well, I appreciate the thriftiness. On the other hand, we just did a six-month-long budget process, and I don't remember hearing allocating funding for this from the general fund.
It, it is from the Metro Grant and then from PDC's E-zone dollars. And we did, in the budget process, bring forward a package that wasn't, you know, you weren't able to fund around the BRT Action Plan. So acknowledge that, I've acknowledged that, yes, you didn't appropriate anything for it. We're using other resources and kind of trying to cobble together a need that we see there right now.
Right. Thank you. And just following off from Commissioner Frisch's question, how does Southeast Uplift and the East Portland Neighborhood Organization and EPAP, the East Portland Action Plan, how do they fit in with the community organizing around transportation?
I think that this will be a resource for all of those, you know, it will be a resource that helps all of those organizations who are also, I don't want to say, there's just an unmet need out there for community organizing that occurs with a big project, and it typically falls on the backs of local community-based organizations to do that kind of on the fly. And so I do think that it benefits those other organizations. In addition to that, our NPIs are very tied in to EPAP, particularly to the Economic Development Committee. So I think that, I think that there's synergy there.
I see that Laurie Boisen from the Division Midway is here, so I can follow with some questions to her. I am, I'd like to ask you again, though, my question about the funding from the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiatives for this plan. Have both of them agreed that they're going to dedicate $100,000 of their money?
The TIF dollars, that's really, first of all, those dollars are not ours to spend. They're the NPIs to spend. So it's really, the figure that you see here, which is about $100,000 per district, is money that they would direct. And so we're just making an estimate of where those dollars would likely go in terms of investments around businesses and business improvements.
But my question is, have they agreed that they're going to dedicate $100,000 per year for five years?
I am not sure whether they have agreed to specifically dedicate that. That resource is theirs to spend, and it's, like I said, it's just an estimate of what they might be spending to help this effort.
And part of how we were thinking about it is that the, both of the two, both of the NPIs in the corridor are directly on what the high-capacity, the proposed alignment of the bus rapid transit line. So the work of the NPIs really is about those districts and directed by those districts, but is inherently, shares the mission that we're trying to do with the economic development work in the local action plan. And what the extra funds are is to bring it to, is to be able to spread it to businesses outside of the NPIs. So that's, it's not so much that we're redirecting any NPI dollars. We're just saying that there's money in the NPIs, and the essence of the NPI-directed work is complementary to what we're trying to do in the action plan.
I'm going to be looking forward to community testimony. Thank you.
So that's basically the, the existing money that I just ran through. And so the other, so I mentioned that with the plan, that we would anticipate adding additional business technical assistance. Right now, again, that's something that we're funding with our Metro Grant this year. But that, we would also be adding, making a request to City Council in order to fund activities such as small business lending and access to capital, a position around connecting the community to anchor institutions, both to the jobs there, and businesses to economic opportunities within anchor institutions, those being education such as Portland Community College, some of the hospitals in the area, and really taking more of a citywide approach for that. And then this year, and then finally, workforce navigation. This year, we have a partnership with Work Systems, Inc., where we have, again, tried to be proactive, trying to knit together some partnerships in this case, in order to test out a workforce navigator in the corridor to try to connect people who are under or unemployed to both workforce training, jobs, and workforce development activities such as resume building, interviewing, other things. So on the second slide that you see here, I have tried my best, we have tried our best, to just give you on an annual basis, a little bit of a glimpse of what this looks like. So we'd been talking earlier about, if you look at the center green, green box with the arrow, we currently have, we're estimating how much of the general fund resources that we get from the city go to the two NPIs and to business technical assistance currently. We would be coming back for that annual request. That's a part of our ongoing budget with the city. We've just acknowledged in the other green bucket that there is an ongoing TIF available for activities that could complement our, our work in the corridor. And all of this business technical assistance would be done through partners such as, you know, we have a whole suite of business technical assistance nonprofit partners, and it is likely that it would continue to be through them. And then finally, you're looking at what new, we're thinking new general fund dollars that we would need. So the Metro Grant is really a one-time, a one-time grant, and our partnership with WSI is also a one-year opportunity at this point. So we would anticipate with that general fund request, continuing the enhanced business technical assistance that's currently funded through the Metro Grant, continuing the workforce navigation services that is currently being funded with a partnership opportunity with WSI, and then finally, really institutionalizing that community organizer function in the corridor, and then adding two new functions, access to capital, so a big barrier for business can be access to capital, and the anchor institution function. And so I think the slide fairly well lays out what, on an annual basis, that, that new request would be coming to City Council.
So one of the things I really appreciated with the transportation budget that Commissioner Novak put forward in our last round was, was a constrained list, and there was a non-constrained list in the Portland Plan and Transportation. Do we have another version of this plan? I, that $580,000 is a very big number, and when I don't know that we're going to have, we're going to have lots of calls on the budget next year. So what happens with this plan if we're not able to fund that?
Well, I think those conversations are, it's certainly something that we could respond to. I think at this point that I would want to go back and talk to the districts, our public partners, and, and more importantly, some of the community partners about what, what are the priorities. When we developed this plan, our philosophy, quite frankly, was if we have a major transit project coming to the, to, to this quarter, and we know that there are inevitably pressures caused by that that are likely to displace businesses and residents, what is it, where's the kitchen sink that we can throw at this in order to try to put tools in place to minimize those displacement impacts? So we can certainly ratchet this back. I would like to do so in consultation with some of our partners.
And if I could just add, the basic way to think about it is with less funds over the next five years, you reduce the area, the geography in which we can work to get to businesses, to a system, and the number of businesses. This overall budget and this size of effort was scaled, once again, to the size of this transit project, which is big, but it's not as big as some of the other transit projects that you've considered. And we just scale it back. That's what happens.
What's the status of the overall project as far as TRIMET doing the, any kind of a transportation system on Division?
Well, Commissioner, if I could just wrap this up, and we'll get TRIMET up here in Metro, who can answer those questions.
Thank you. Just one final question, though. What discussions were had as far as the community organizer, as to where that would be located and how it might partner with the neighborhood coalitions? Because it seems like we're, you're going to be hiring somebody and hoping that they've got an ongoing job rather than a one, one-time funding job.
I believe that we did have conversations with the NPIs. We, I don't think we did have conversations with some of the other community-based organizations about that.
Thank you.
Questions, other comments for these folks? And do you want me to call up the four, or did you, sorry, Commissioner Frisch?
So I just want to make sure I understand the context for this. Joe, what's the analogy here in terms of the exercise we're going through? What's the best analogy?
Best analogy?
Ahead of a major transportation project, anticipating some of the unintended consequences or some of the-
Oh, so if I could describe it, and is-
We normally take these up after the horse has left the barn. So we're, I'm trying to think, what's, what's the equivalent?
Well, this is, this is us trying to get ahead of actually the final alignment and decisions about the, the project. Part of what you're seeing, and I think it's best reflected in the work that the Housing Bureau has done, early on, even in the planning of this, we were generating information that the Housing Bureau has been able to use to start to look for, set some of those early targets for retention or purchase. And, you know, as funds became available, or they could reprogram them, they've been able to do that. The seek, the practice around transitory development, the way you think about it, we're trying to think about it nationally, I think, is to get ahead of the projects and to bring an equity focus to that work, not just a real estate focus. And in this case, because of the characteristics of the corridor and the work we're already doing out there, this was an obvious place to try to do that. I don't know if that's responsive.
That's very responsive. And so, Steve, the total cost of this project, when we do the transportation enhancements, you would estimate as a low to a high of what?
I think we're going to defer to TRIMET on that in fear of getting it somewhat wrong.
It'll be interesting to hear that number, because another way of looking at this is, there's a lot of different ways of looking at, at where you landed. One is, it is scaled to the size of the project. Another one, it is scaled in part to the available resources. One is, it's a pilot, and we're going to see whether this is really the right number, or does it, in the future, projects become the floor, and can we go above it? I mean, there's different ways of looking at it. Another way of looking at it is, what's the percentage of the total funding that we're setting aside to anticipate upstream these things? And how do we scope out the cost of these projects in the future? We don't know the answers to any of those questions, just like we don't know what the power of the market's going to be ultimately. But you're trying to get upstream and anticipate some of this, and we're going to learn a few things. And what makes it different for me is that over the last eight years, we usually have this conversation when it's too late. And so it may be the right mix, it may be too modest, who knows? But it's certainly scaled to what the available resources are. But you've been very honest. If the resources don't all materialize, it will just be, it'll, it'll be put on a diet. You'll get proportionally less. And that will be a council choice, to the extent you're asking for new resources in the future. Is that fair?
Fair.
I think I-
I do think it's important to note, this has been largely a community-driven process, and I think it's kind of a new process, where basically we've had a conversation with the community, and folks have said, we are not sure we want a new high-capacity transit line unless we have some assurances on what happens with housing and economic development, because we do not want, to use a deliberate pun, but a paraphrase, we do not want high-capacity transit to simply be a vehicle for gentrification. So I think actually, we'll continue to have that conversation with the community, and it's possible that if we cannot fund this plan, I mean, back and forth about, well, if we can only fund X percent of this plan, do people in the community still want this project? this project? So I don't know if how much heart there may be with a few hundred thousand here and there, but I think that if we thought that we're in danger of losing the lion's share of this investment, that we might say, actually, we don't think the community wants the project.
Well, just one, I mean, one comment off that. In a lot of the other work we do at this body, we take the mitigation costs out of the overall pot of money. We don't say it's another pot of money. We say, we're going to do this project along the river's bank, and we're going to take a portion of the money to deal with the mitigation, or whatever. It's, and in some cases, it's prescribed. This is different. You can do this transportation project without being required to spend this money. I wonder if what we're heading towards philosophically is a kind of thinking that says, if you're going to do a $100 million transportation project of this kind, you've got to take 20 million of it and do housing and economic development, other things, because it's, it's all of the, it's all of a whole. And the only reason we don't think that way here, and in other cases we do, is it is legally required that we consider mitigation in other contexts and use the same funding source to address the mitigation.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. I think I should call up the four community members that we have invited testimony from, Chris, Vivian, Duncan, and Kim.
And then we can bring forward TriMet to answer some of the other questions.
Okay. So why don't you pull up another chair, please, and come up as a panel, Chris Smith, Vivian Satterfield, Duncan Huang, Kim Marks. Appreciate having you here and your work on this project. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Chris Smith, Vice Chair of the Plans and Sustainability Commission, and I am here today carrying the commission's recommendation regarding this plan. We had our public hearing back in January, and you have a letter from us, from several months ago now, regarding our recommendation. I would say first that we want to applaud the governance structure for this project, the populating the steering committee with community members and representation of relevant advocacy organizations, not just with elected officials, we think is a very good idea. So we commend Metro and the other project partners who made that decision. While we recommend this plan, we do so, and it was an eight-to-one vote by which we recommended this plan, and I'll talk about the minority view in a minute, we do so with some conditions. And the first is very much the discussion that you've just been having, that if you cannot find your way clear to fund this mitigation plan, you should seriously reconsider whether we should do the transit project or not. And, you know, it's, it's a little bit challenging, I know, because we can get federal match for the transit component of this project, the federal government is not offering any match for the community mitigation pieces. So it, it makes it a little tougher for us to come up with the resources, but our commission felt that it was important that we do the mitigation, we commit to do the mitigation. We would also feel better if the affordable housing component of this mitigation plan was stronger than 300 units. We appreciate the effort to get to 300 units, but we think the real impact is probably somewhat larger. And finally, we think that there are additional strategies you'd probably be adding to the toolkit. I think we heard one of them today, which is land banking in advance of the transit project, because of course, as soon as the transit project appears to be certain, the public benefit of that transit project will wind up being reflected in the property values, and we'll pay more to get the land for the affordable housing and the other needs that we have. So I was heartened here that Kurt was talking about acquiring property now before that value was fully baked in. We think that's an important strategy. We also feel like affordable housing retention in the corridor is an important strategy. And then finally, I'll mention that the dissenting member of our commission basically did so on the basis that we should be doing more and should have started it sooner. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim, who's next? Vivian, whoever...
Hey, good afternoon. Vivian Satterfield with Opel Environmental Justice, Oregon. I don't frequently have reason to correct Council Stacey, but I'm actually not representing Apano in the J District, that's my colleague here, Duncan, although I am a resident of the area, and our office has recently located to the intersection of 82nd and Franklin, so we're right in the neighborhood. But we do work at the intersection of housing and transportation, so that's why this project is so important, and that's why we've been participating on the steering committee for a number of years now. And that's also caused us to develop this community stabilization goal and toolkit, which we released to the steering committee in March of 2015 alongside some of the community members represented here, Duncan, Heidi Ginnan, who's no longer with Upstream Public Health, of course Opel, the defunct now Coalition for a Global Future, Division Midway Alliance, East Portland Neighborhood Office. There's a number of organizations that have been really involved in digging into some of the tough questions that the council has been asking here around community stabilization, of course, affordable housing production and preservation. So I think that, you know, overall, the action plan, I do want to commend the staff that have been working on it for lifting up a lot of what we put in this toolkit, both from the legal tools that we have available to us and others, some ideas that we haven't tried innovating yet. I do like the idea of land banking, I think it's a really critical tool. And of course, our membership of Bus Riders Unite is going to be digging in more on the transportation aspect of this, and I've been hearing from members that we have some, we have a lot of questions and some concerns around the transportation angle. But as this action plan stands now, I'm speaking mostly to the development side and economic development aspects of that. So I think that what I've been hearing from the line of questioning here from this council is, is right on, these are critical questions, you know, to address. How are we going to develop an analysis around the dollars being spent for transportation? And how are we blending them with housing and economic development? And quite frankly, we need some leadership to figure out some of these tough questions. We have a lot of tools available to us now that we haven't had before, but what does that look like citywide? What does that look like in our specific target area? And, you know, we need this plan regardless of the transit investment, looking at the patterns of gentrification and displacement, this plan is needed regardless. Thank you.
Who's next?
Okay. Good afternoon. Duncan Huang with Apano and the J District. Thanks for having us in for testimony. So after extensive community engagement with our folks, many of which was in language, we spoke with residents, business owners, and landowners. Generally speaking, our community is supportive of the BRT project, but we have three major concerns. The first, obviously, that we've discussed is for displacement of our business and neighbors. Our businesses are also concerned about what happens to our local business community during construction, and, you know, how that would disrupt the business district, and what would happen to, to their customers. And finally, we had a lot of concern over potential loss of property and land to the project. In, in the previous scheme, we were losing between 10 and seven, or 10 and 27 businesses within the district, which would have been incredibly disruptive and really not palatable to the community. So to kind of illustrate where we are with this project, I just want to highlight the corner of 82nd and Division, because it really kind of illustrates the issues that we're facing, you know, and how it intersects with this project. So on the northeast corner, you have Hong Farlow, which no longer exists, it was a Portland institution, it was here in Portland for 87 years and has now closed. The new owners, in talking to them, are really excited about the transit project. You kind of see their, the dollar signs flashing in their eyes, you know, so we're seeing some sort of property speculation already. Across the street, on the southeast corner, we have Canton Grill. If you drive by today, they have a sign on their marquee that says 72 years in operation, third-generation business owners. So Cindy, the current business owner, you know, she's a third-generation owner of that business, and, you know, there's some great video footage of her being really emotional about this project. She really wants to stay in this neighborhood, and, you know, when, when her property was potentially up for acquisition to do the turn lanes, you know, she was really upset and emotional about that. I don't think that's on the table anymore, but it kind of speaks to the sentiment of our business owners, they really want to stay here, and, you know, they have been here for, some of them 72 years, so it's, it's really important for them to stay. Across the street, on the northwest corner, you have the new PCC Southeast Campus, now serving 11,000 students, now also a community anchor, you know, they're really excited about the project, because it brings more access to opportunity for PCC students. And finally, across the street, on the southeast corner, we have Jams for Jade, the Panam multicultural space, a TOD project and a future site for affordable housing. We're intending to have 48 units of affordable housing there, which would be a great win for the community. So that's kind of like a microcosm of the impact of this project on our neighbors and residents, and, you know, kind of going from that earlier this year in January with the Sustainability Commission, our, our board voted to support the BRT project contingent on the funding for the mitigation strategies that were being proposed. You know, there's a whole suite of priorities there that are all great, but for us, really four rise to the top. The first is more affordable housing, 300 units is a great start. I think that, that was the amount called for already in the comp plan, so the city should go above and beyond that where possible. We're really interested in having a business mitigation fund and more technical assistance for our small businesses, particularly during construction. We're concerned about any loss of transit, if we lose underlying service, you know, how is that going to affect our transit-dependent residents and how they get to their jobs in school? And finally, we're really excited about the possibility of land banking and, and getting ahead of the, the issues that are coming. So I guess overall, you know, we're really excited about everything in the Portland Action Plan, and we want to be a BRT project that makes the lives of residents and riders and neighbors long the line and better. So for this reason, you know, we think the Portland Action Plan should be adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marks, you get to back clean up for this group.
Oh, thank you. My name's Kim Marks, and I'm the representative for the East Portland Action Plan on the Steering Committee. I want to first thank the staff of all the different agencies for putting in the work that they have put in to come up with the plan. Having said that, I have to admit that frankly, I'm somewhat ambivalent about the plan. As Duncan just mentioned, the 300 units that are currently in the plan were already on, on deck, and the only benefit that I see that the plan provides is that those units are directly linking, being linked to the corridor where they otherwise would not necessarily be. I don't think that the approach that was used to determine those number of units is appropriate, given the nature of the populations that live along Powell and Division. It doesn't take a genius to realize that there are a lot more people of low income and moderate income that live along that particular corridor than in other parts of the city. And to only allocate proportional to the entire city for a 10-mile corridor seems to be less than impressive, to say the least. I think that there certainly needs to be more housing. As for the economic development aspect of it, I think that, that there's significant oomph there, or lack, for lack of a better word, and Lori Boyson will be speaking to that in more detail. I have some concerns with regards to how the housing is going to be allocated along the corridor. There's nothing to say that it's going to be an equal distribution along the entire corridor, and in fact, as was discussed earlier today, a significant portion of the funding that's already, or been identified, is on the inner east side urban renewal area, and as my understanding is, that money's tied to that urban renewal area. You know, people may correct me if I'm wrong, that means that a significant portion of what's already been identified is going to wind up in inner east Portland and leaving a significant portion to be found for outer east Portland. With that said, I'd also like to talk about the underlying transportation project. I have been beating the drum for a significant long time about the nature of this project. I'm glad to hear that it was mostly referred to as a high-capacity transit and, project, and not a bus rapid transit, because frankly, in my eyes, I don't see this as being a bus rapid transit project. It does, it may meet the federal standards for a bus rapid transit project, but those standards are frankly fairly low. There's significant issues as to whether or not there's going to be any increased savings in time, given the alignment. There will be savings over the Powell-Division alignment, but the only savings of time that I see are from the elimination of bus stops and priority lighting systems at major intersections. There's nothing to say that those buses aren't going to get stuck in traffic along with everybody else in rush hour, and that's going to significantly impact both the time that it takes as well as reliability. The other major issue that I have with this is that there is a significant reduction in bus stops that are being proposed now for both inner Division and outer Division. As a person who lives in outer Division or near outer Division, I can tell you that the street grid does not really afford to have a significant reduction in bus stops without causing a major impact on the people that are going to lose the stations or stops that they're currently using. That means people are going to walk farther and walk through, and that's going to be walking further through unimproved streets. That's not a good thing. East Portland Action Plan has said that it cannot support a project that is going to negatively impact people when it comes to transportation. What this plan currently being, in its current iteration, is essentially borrowing from Peter from, on Division, so that TriMet can expand east or north-south service on 184th and I don't think that that's equitable, that a portion of East Portland should have to lose service to provide service for another portion of East Portland. Having said that, I'll wait for, to make a final analysis on that issue when TriMet and Metro come up with their final numbers, but as I currently look at the information before me, those are the conclusions that I've come up with. Thank you.
Mr. Marks, has the East Portland Action Plan sent us a letter or taken a position on the action, on this particular local action plan?
It has, and I can forward a copy of that to you. Essentially, East Portland Action Plan's position is that mitigation measures have to be taken to, to alleviate displacement effects from the project, that there needs to be economic supports for local businesses, and that there should not be a negative impact on transportation or on, on the transit riders that currently exist along Division.
Thanks. It's probably in my inbox, but I haven't been able to check that. Thank you.
I'm sure you have a lot of stuff in your inbox, so...
I've been away for three weeks, I hardly dare look at it.
Okay, other questions for these leaders?
The one thing that I don't see in the, in the list of particularly housing initiatives is, is, is getting in front of predatory speculative behavior around homeownership. So there's a big number for, for renters. One of the things we learned around the Albina Plan and its, the areas that we fell short were, were the stories of homeowners who were, felt that they were victims of predatory agents and other folks, and lost their homes as a result. The plan is heavy on renter protections, it has an economic development piece. I'm guessing that we could, in a 10-mile corridor of this dimension, I'm guessing we could come up with a pretty good database of, of single-family residences. And, you know, I know that I get a notice almost every week from BPS telling me about some planning project, so we, we have the mechanism. Should we be considering some kind of communication with homeowners, maybe even just targeting seniors, but, but thinking this through, to give people information about this plan, some potential risks ahead, and providing them with information where they can get neutral advice as to how to evaluate unsolicited offers?
Yes, that's something that we attempted to flesh out a little bit in our 11 Goals to Community Stability, and recognizing a lot of it was pretty heavy on the renter aspect because of, again, who's living along the corridor, but also recognizing that some of the long-term homeowners there also need tools. And so there's some suggestions in here, including providing long-term homeowners with a tax credit, and also developing limited equity cooperatives as well, but...
So, I mean, you know, thanks to Measure 50, this is one area where it, it has at least a shock... least a shock absorber effect as, as property values go up. But I would, I would urge us to come back to this question and think about, we've got, we've got communities that speak different languages. We've got probably, my guess is, from my recollection, is you're going to have a lot of older adults in homes up and down this quarter, and at least with respect to homeownership, we ought to be thinking through a strategy to get people information, because what they may first find out is someone knocking on their door with an unsolicited offer to buy their house, ahead of actually knowing that there's a major transportation improvement coming.
That's a good idea.
And there are a lot of bad actors out there right now, because there's a shortage of supply, and there's a lot of people that are using an imbalance in the marketplace. So maybe we could think, maybe about.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Some way of getting something with our partners out to homeowners, just giving them heads up.
Yeah, helpful.
Commissioner Smith, I noticed that the Planning Sustainability Commission held a hearing in January. Do you happen to remember whether that was a day meeting, excuse me, a day meeting or an evening meeting, and was it well attended by community members?
I believe that we had five people testify, three of whom were Steering Committee members, so I would not say that we had a groundswell of.
Was it during the day or in the evening?
I don't recall. Tim says it was during the day.
I'm a little concerned that we're having, we're holding a hearing about something which is obviously of great importance to the community at a time that it's very difficult for people to get here.
Yep, that's a fair, fair point. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. I know we wanted to hear from TriMet. I'm not sure, Alan, if you were signed up to speak, but I think we do want to hear from you, so we'll summon you even if you weren't planning to testify.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and members of the commission. So why don't I say a few words and then I'd be happy to answer any questions. Alan LeToe with TriMet, I'm the director of planning and policy, and we're very excited to be able to be working on this project with, with Metro and the city and the other partners. It's a great opportunity. Along Division, along the four, the line four Division today, about, almost 10,000 times a day, somebody gets on a bus. So this is a heavily-used, heavily-needed bus today, and we can deliver quicker, more reliable service for those folks, and as you know, probably all too well, the expectation is that this corridor is going to grow and the demand will grow. And so we can bring a project that's going to serve today's needs and provide the kind of capacity that's needed to support the city's visions and our expectations for providing transit that develop, that helps develop and realize the visions that communities have. I know there were a couple of questions I heard already, so I'll go ahead and jump in and try to answer those.
Yeah, please, the current estimated capital cost.
Sure. So just quickly, where we are with the project. We are in project development with the Federal Transit Administration, which is a formal step in the process of pursuing, securing, funding, and developing and delivering the project. That means that they recognize that we are developing it, we are actually at a point where the efforts that we're doing now are matchable with federal, future federal funds, assuming that the project is successful. And that, that puts us in a particular positive step with, with FTA. We are looking at a schedule that brings the Steering Committee a, to the point where hopefully they're able to make a specific recommendation about the alignment, the stations, the terminus by the end of this calendar year, and puts us into further engineering the environmental process, identifying mitigations and, or potential impacts and mitigations during the following year, and then moving towards the finalization of the finance plan and getting under construction to the point where we can open in 2021. I wish we could do it faster. We'll continue to look at that, but it's still a process that needs to involve lots of people with lots of detail, and it's still a federal process, so there is some timeline along there. In terms of capital, capital cost, we don't know exactly right now, but we do have a range of approximately from 175 million to approximately 225 million, that is the very likely range of capital cost. And that really is, for this kind of a project, this kind of a transit project, much more so in some ways than a light rail project, which we are so familiar with, as our first true BRT project. There are still lots of details that need to be worked through, and individual intersection designs make a big difference. And as you heard from Duncan, you know, impacts at an individual intersection need to be worked through so that we can bring down those costs, and those kinds of work still needs to happen to narrow that range of costs down. With that, I'd just be happy to answer any questions.
Could you give me just some, some concepts of what would make for a bus rapid transit on Division? It's, it's hard for me to imagine, when it's such a congested street right now, how, what kinds of things you could do to make a bus go faster than a car?
Right, a few things. One is, the, the entire length, obviously, of Division has very different characteristics. If you, if you think about what Division, it looks like at 28th, it's very different from what it looks like at 148th. And that's the, the great character of this kind of bus-based investment, that it is nimble enough to be able to deal with and provide benefits in both kinds of environments. In terms of, actually generically across the alignment, what we're looking at is using stations with better amenities, better crossings, better improvements, so that we can attract people to those. Those would be, the, the current proposed stations would be at places where approximately 74% of riders are getting on bus stops today. We would ask the remainder of folks to move, to travel just a little bit farther to get to this more comfortable location, and that really reduces the variability in travel time, which means that we can schedule it faster, which means we get quicker travel, we get more reliability. Signal priority has been talked about, and that will be.
Before you go on to the next thing, the community member just said that cutting, because what I heard what you say is that it's going to go faster because it won't stop as, as often.
Yes, that's absolutely true. There, there are only certain ways to speed up a transit vehicle. Light rail, even though it's in its own right-of-way, if we stopped every block, it would go very slowly. What we're looking for and what we're working with the Steering Committee and the community is, where is that right way to balance out, making sure that people can get to the service, but making sure that once you're on the service, it doesn't stop all the time?
So it would include things like adding sidewalks where there aren't any?
Yeah, not only adding sidewalks where they're needed, which thankfully, I'm happy to say, Division has been improving over time, so it's, it's less dire than it was, but it's still not complete. It also includes ADA-compatible access at those stations and looking at that throughout the entire corridor, so that it's not just, you know, nimble, healthy people who can make to the stations, but people who are traveling with, using mobility devices as well.
Okay, sorry to interrupt you. One thing is fewer stations to make it go faster than you were going to say.
The signal priority, and we've been running with signal priority at various locations throughout the city for a number of years, but we're really on the next generation. They're much smarter, they're much more nimble and adaptive and able to, to provide additional travel times. Each individual's intersection, especially the large ones that really control what happens for travel throughout the corridor, gets a serious look at, to look at whether there are ways to readjust the lanes, give us queue jumps so that we can get past the long line of cars close to the intersection and not have those sort of cases, what that happens in the peak of the peak, where you could, you could lose five minutes in an intersection. If we can forestall that, we can move a lot faster during the peak as well.
But there's not that many places where you could add a lane, right?
Not a full lane the entire distance, but what it takes is, and this quarter, like a number of other quarters, but not always, there are some key intersections that really control everything. So, you know, starting from downtown, some of the key ones are 11th, 12th, Cesar Chavez, 82nd, 122nd. So it's, it, it doesn't need a treatment everywhere. It needs treatments at those key intersections, and that can be something like a right turn-only except bus that doesn't dramatically negatively impact the cars moving, but does move the bus ahead.
If you're, if you're, if you're talking about essentially a single-lane road, where you're getting a preference at the intersection, how do you deal with the backup beyond that? And, and I, I'm, I'm thinking that the last time I had a, a great experience with BRT was taking a bus from Denver to Boulder, but the singular feature about that trip, other than, in addition to the nice bus and all the infrastructure they built, was it was on a dedicated lane on a highway, so it had a preferential route.
Right.
So what do you do? I mean, Division, for example, through most of the day is clogged, and, and when you get into the restaurant section and closer in, it's, it, it's, it's almost impossible to move. So how does a BRT, other than, other than giving them a preference at intersection, how do you deal with that congestion? And frankly, and I'm just going to the part in the twenties and thirties with all the restaurants, there are times during the day when part of the block is just cars trying to look for parking, and, and it takes a couple of cars trying to park in a tight spot, and that's a couple of minutes. So what's the, how do you deal with that challenge?
Right, and, and Division, the way it's developed and the way I think we, we anticipate it's going to continue to develop, is exactly the kind of place where it needs this ability to carry more people, to attract more people to the transit, so that that, that development can happen without even more of the, the kind of swirling for parking and all of that activity. What we're looking at is, despite the, the feel of that section, what's often happening is that there are those key intersections that are causing backups that are kind of disrupting everything. Almost, in, in that section, almost no matter what we do, we'll be running a little bit faster with those kinds of treatments, but we're looking at some key intersections to see whether we can actually improve the way the overall traffic system flows through that intersection so that buses can take advantage of that as well. A great example is if, whether we can do anything at 11th, 12th to be able to mitigate the impacts of the freight rail crossing at that intersection, where sometimes that just blocks up. If we can just look at some reconfiguring of what happens there, we can move everybody through.
I'm all for that. Nothing's easy, though, and I'm guessing that runs up against Vision Zero at some point, because if you time the lights and you encourage people and you give people a greater flow, probably people take advantage by, by going at a faster pace. But given the sequencing on that street, I think aligning the lights is a, is a great idea. I don't know whether it has unintended consequence.
Absolutely, and we've been a strong partner and a strong component of, of the city's Vision Zero efforts, and I'd tell you what, what happens with that is, all we need is for people to keep moving, not to move really quickly. So we very much want to provide a great transit service in a place where people can comfortably and safely cross the street as well.
Are there any other strategies to make the bus go faster?
That, that boils it down, but we can really look at, there are lots of kind of smaller details that really add up when you're talking about a, a line this long. So we've kind of invested our design team with the idea that every second counts. So these are different buses than what we've typically seen. These are three-door buses with all-door boarding. They'd be using the hop-fast pass to be able to get people on and off as quickly as possible, so it'll feel more like a light rail in terms of boarding and aligning, and that saves time. At most, if not, well, at most of the stations, we likely will be able to allow folks with mobility devices and strollers and whatever else to board at the second door, much like a streetcar with a bridge plate, which is much easier and quicker to be able to load than it is at the front. And all of those little individual pieces add up on every single trip, so that we end up with a faster trip and a more reliable trip than we, when we would with typical service.
So this would involve developing and buying buses specifically for that line?
Exactly, yes.
And how much would that cost?
It's, it's part of the cost that I already mentioned. I, I wouldn't want to tell you right off the top of my head, but they're, they're a premium, they're something close to, you know, a typical forty-foot bus is around $500,000, and we're talking in the $800,000 range, something like that. So the additional space comes with a premium, but you get a lot of benefits out of it.
Do buses like that exist?
Oh, absolutely.
Given the, the pilot project you're in with the federal government for using electric buses on regular service, maybe this will be the first electric corridor in the city.
We, we would love to. There's always, of course, the, the cost question, but this would be a wonderful place to try that.
Might be additional resources that might come available for that.
Sure, Gina's doing a good job of, of reminding me. The other thing I should mention in terms of timing is that, I mentioned the locally-preferred alternative decision that needs to be made to be able to move forward on the project, and the timing would be, once we get a recommendation from the Steering Committee, then it needs to come back to the jurisdictions, including the city of Portland, for your affirmation or adjustment of that locally-preferred alternative, and that would be in the, late this calendar year.
So that's of concern to me, too, because we've got the, kind of the framework here, but often once projects like this with multi-jurisdictions come back to us, we're told, well, you can't change it now because everybody else has agreed to it, or this is the consensus. So I'm just, I'm nervous about hearing from the East Portland Action Plan representative that it's not acceptable to them to cut out the number of stops. If that's the way you get your speed, and what do I do when, when you come back?
Well, it's, it's our job to continue to work with the folks that you saw and the folks at EPAP, to work through that as well as possible, so that, our hope, obviously, is that we bring you something that you can be comfortable with.
Have you thought, have you analyzed what would happen if you just ran the buses more frequently, so that there wouldn't be as many people getting on at the stops, or they wouldn't necessarily have to stop at every stop? Because that, that, that's what happens in Europe, is that there's a bus every 10 minutes, nobody checks to find out when it's coming because it's going to come, and it stops when you ask it to, but not otherwise.
Can I just say that, I'll give you one cautionary flag on that, and it's the number 12 bus at peak time, and what I've observed is that they end up getting stacked, and they get stacked, I'm not saying that happens everywhere, but on the number 12, they get stacked, and then it actually is a huge drag, because they, they, they all stop at the, you know, in sequence, and you're just backed up.
And as a rider, as a frequent rider of the 12 Sandy, I can, I can tell you, I'm very aware of that. We call it bus bunching. What happens is, one bus gets just a little bit behind, and then they get a kind of an overly-large load, they start slowing down, the next one, and then what we have to do is we skip, and that actually really frustrates our riders, because you're standing at a bus stop and a bus goes by you, and they're kind of pointing at the bus behind them that they may or not be able to see, and turns into a lot of understandable complaints. Being able to have something that reliably shows up consistently on, on the line four Division, we have something like five-minute headways during the peaks right now, but it's lumpy. And if we can smooth that out and have vehicles that, each vehicle has more capacity, so we can bring people, more people on and not risk those pass-ups, we'll be doing a great service to our riders.
Other questions for Alan or Gina? Thank you, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Other folks that want to speak this afternoon, Ms. Boyson and others?
I have one person sign up, Lori Boyson.
Come on up. You looked prepared, so that's why I called on you specifically.
Thank you very much. I'm Lori Boyson. I'm the executive director for the Division Midway Alliance, and I'm also a Steering Committee member on the Powell-Division Transit and Development Project. I snuck in on Bob, or he would have, I'm sure, recognized me. Mayor Hales and commissioners, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today about the Portland Action Plan as it relates to this project. I am not going to reiterate what my other committee, what the other committee members said. I echo their sentiments. I believe that this, I encourage you to adopt this Portland Action Plan. I believe that this plan is the result of collaborative work between city bureaus, all city bureaus, community organizations, Metro and TriMet. It provides much-needed community stability actions to a transit project that can jeopardize a tenuous housing crisis in an already vulnerable community. I'm happy to see the business and technical assistance and workforce development tools addressed. And while this sex, this section provides a broad overview of workforce and economic development, specific tools, I encourage the council to adopt specific tools that will, that will feed this. Specifically, as an East Portland Action Plan representative to the Metropolitan Alliance for Workforce Equity, I have come to believe that the most important tool we can use to make sure the project benefits current businesses and residents is to adopt community benefits agreements similar to the pilot CBA developed for the Water Bureau projects. Deliverables on that project exceeded projected goals and achieved excellent results. For example, the goal for journey-level hours worked by people of color was 18%. The CBA pilot achieved 25%. Minority and women-owned firms and minority apprenticeship partnership participation was over, over double the stated goal, and female apprenticeship participation was triple the goal, or nearly 30% of total project hours. Utilizing local and minority hiring through a. local and minority hiring through a CBA would directly impact residents living along the corridor by providing not only much-needed living wage jobs, but eventual professions to these residents. Those residents will in turn spend money in those local businesses, improving those businesses as well. Community, community benefits agreements do work. Seattle found them so beneficial, it has established a threshold by which any public project that meets the criteria automatically triggers a CBA. And I encourage the city of Portland to adopt a similar model. I also wanted to just quickly address to you, Commissioner Fish, I love your idea about creating some type of model for mobile home parks as an affordable housing. And I encourage you to visit the Rolling Wills Mobile Home Park at 143rd and Division. They are renovating their property in an amazing manner. They're replacing, replacing mobile homes with updated units. They are greening. They have their own swimming pool. It's an amazing place, and I recommend that you check it out. I want to again, thank you for your time, and I hope that you please adopt the Powell Division Transit Development Project in the Portland Action Plan.
Lori, thank you for your testimony. Could you tell me about the community benefit agreement? Is, is that included in the document here?
It is not included in the document. It's something that we have talked about, and it's, it is a tool that the East Portland Action Plan, it's an anti, it's an anti-displacement tool that they have recommended through, they went through a very, very long process, I'm sure you're aware of, to, to pull out tools. And two of the three groups that worked on that identified community benefits agreements as the number, as what they felt was a very important tool to use. It's because you are actually bringing people to work in your communities, and it's, it's just very beneficial. And, and it's, you know, I, I don't have a, like, this is Plan One, Two, Three, but...
But my question is, should that be in this action plan? Was it discovered?
I think it should be added, yes.
Was it discussed by the steering committee?
I don't remember. I don't recall.
But it's certainly something that East Portland Action Plan has...
It's something East Portland Action Plan definitely is behind.
And what's your feedback, living, working in the district for a long time, about the question of fewer bus stops?
We've worked with TRIMET for quite some time. We spent hours this past fall, which kind of talks to what Kate was talking about, reaching out to our communities and identifying and finding community members and talking to them about what was going on. I think about the work that I do for my, for my community, and over fifty percent of my time was being spent just on outreach for BRT, when we learned that bus stops were going to be taken, a large percentage of bus stops, large percent of our, of the population in our district was going to be losing their stops. We worked with Alan and Elizabeth and Metro and, and City of Portland to add on a few more stops that we were concerned about, that, that were large numbers of people were getting on and off. At this point, my concern is, there are so few stops, there are so few stops being taken out, that is, it, to me, it's like, how rapid will this transit be? And I'm still waiting, as Kim is, as many of us are, I'm waiting for those numbers. I want to see, today, if you travel from 174th to 11th on line four, it takes, I don't know, an hour and thirty-five minutes. If we have the bus rapid transit, it will take an hour and twenty minutes. I want to know the differences. I want to know the numbers. And I also want to know, what's the difference between 82nd to 11th? What's the difference from 82nd to 174th? And those are the kinds of things that we at the steering committee level are looking at, and then passing on to our community members, and talking to them about, and getting feedback from them, saying, what do you want to see here? You're not happy with this? Great, we take it back to them.
So then, why should we, why are you recommending that we adopt this plan today?
Because I think the time is right now. I feel like if we, we're moving along in a, in a timeline. We need to move forward with this timeline. We've made huge headway with this project. I believe an action plan is not something that, I believe it changes. I don't think it's static. I believe that as we move forward, a community benefits agreement today is not necessary until we start doing construction. But it's something we need to start looking at, and it's something that you, as council, have the authority to, to authorize.
When we adopted the East Portland Action Plan, which Commissioner Fish and I remember is one of the greatest things we did in the first year of our terms, we promised that we were absolutely going to do it. And each year, the East Portland Action Plan group comes back to us, and you tell us, these things you've done, these things are still pending. I'm concerned that we can't, I, I don't want to promise to, I don't want to adopt this plan, when I can't make that promise on this. I don't, I can't tell you that I'm going to be able to allocate more funding for this.
You can't make the promise to allocate additional funding for what? I'm sorry.
For the, for the implementation of this local action plan, when the staff are telling me that it requires, in order to do it, requires another, at least a half a million dollars of ongoing money in one area, and I haven't...
I, I guess then I, I would put it upon council to look to, to figure out how to. I, I love what Commissioner Fish said, that in some cases, you are required to have a certain amount of mitigation fund, and in this case, it isn't. I would think it would be really wonderful to see council step to that level and say, you know what, we are going to commit to this, because we understand that this is a way to bring equity to East Portland, that this is a tool that, as Vivian said earlier, we need this now. And if we, if we don't start this now, and planning sustainability, same type of thing, these conversations began because communities said, great, you're doing this transit project, what's going to happen to all the people who are living here, who can no longer afford to live here? If we, as community members, had not said that, we would have moved forward. Now we're saying, move forward with this plan, because we have to, the time is now for us to move forward. If we wait, it may be too late. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you. Other questions?
I have another question for TRIMET, actually.
Okay.
My, sorry.
Come on up, Alan. Round two.
Because I ride the twelve, but the other way to Southwest. And there, it's, at Rushow, you have the option of the ninety-four, which stops once between seven miles out and downtown, and similarly coming back. Or you can get the twelve, which stops all along the way.
Right.
So is that being considered for division, so that you wouldn't have to take out all of the stops?
Not for, not for division. We, we thought about that early on and discarded that. It does, it, that kind of service does not come with any additional capital resources from the federal government. It does not come with a ability to provide service throughout the day, so that it helps a very small number of riders. So it's something that we're looking at in terms of the corridor. This corridor seems appropriate to bring a improvement that helps all of the riders throughout the day, seven days a week.
Except those who are living between the stops?
I would argue, and we've certainly talked to plenty of folks who have indicated that they seem to agree with this, that walking just a little bit farther to be able to have a much more comfortable station, and have a more reliable and quicker ride, is of total benefit.
Thank you.
But other questions? And I'm not sure if there's anyone else who wanted to speak. I know we had more questions for you, but, okay, perhaps not.
I would just call for, can we have a council discussion before we take a vote?
Sure.
So Steve, can I follow up on a couple of points? One of my takeaways on this is that if there was ever a capital construction project that cried out for the highest level of, of coordination between all of the bureaus and some other partners, this is it. And so to the extent you've been taking the lead on this effort to get everybody to coordinate the work they do, I think the one thing that, the one headwind here that could really work against what you're trying to do, since we're talking about potentially upgraded streets, sidewalks, the addition of things like bioswells, the ongoing work with water and sewer, new construction, which, by the way, whenever there's new construction, we seem to mysteriously lose a lane, and, and on and on and on. I think if there was ever a time that we need to map this out and coordinate the timing of investments and major construction projects along this corridor, this is, this cries out for it, because we could end up creating essentially a gauntlet, that even if you painted the bus red and gave it a fire engine siren, you're not going to get through if we're not coordinating this effort. So that's something Steve's taken the lead on. Obviously, P-Bot, BES, Water and others, and then some utilities are working on. It just seems to me, this is, this is a, a good one for us to focus on, the way we did early, you know, we've done on, say, division at a smaller scale. And I, and I would encourage you and Leah to convene all the bureaus that have a dog in this fight, so we start thinking about how we, how we time capital construction work.
Well, I think BPS is officially the lead in all of this, so I rely on them to convene everybody. That, that's somewhat jokingly, but no, we need, we need to do that, but we all need to be involved.
On the homeownership side, I guess I would just say to Kurt, can we just, just investigate whether we, that there's a database that we could call upon, we could find? I mean, we seem to mail out a lot of things to the public. And so I would love to know what's the universe of single-family residences that we could communicate with, and who we might partner with on that. And maybe we partner with elders in action to target just older adults first, or maybe we partner with some culturally specific groups to, to, to talk to people. I'm going to just, in advance of the vote and the discussion, just address something my friend and colleague Commissioner Fritz just said about funding. Because as everyone knows, we cannot today commit a future council to a spending commitment. So we can't do that. And so we're not saying today that the council next year and the year after is going to spend X dollars. What this plan contemplates, as I look at the backup documents, is a lot of non-general fund money being allocated to this task in a creative way. So going through all the new tools at the Housing Bureau, and looking for ways through the HIF, through the, through the securitization of Airbnb revenue, to everything else, finding a way, and saying, yeah, we're going to come to council every year and say, here's our chunk that we can dedicate to this goal, and to, and to closing the delta. And, and if some of our assumptions are unduly modest about revenue we're going to get from some of these new tools, and the toolkit, then we can use non-general fund revenues to close that gap. But what I, what I anticipate is an annual forum in which we discuss how to get there. And Commissioner Fritz is right, we can't commit here to the future general fund money, and, worst-case scenario, in two or three years, we're in a recession, and we're not going to say, we're going to fund this, and then turn around and cut, cut out a community center in the heart of this community. So, but, but I'm encouraged by the, by the amount of non-general fund sources that we can tap. And what I read this to be is a commitment to pull as much of that as possible and focus it on the corridor. So that's, that's how, that's, that's how I'm going to interpret it. And then I will go out to 143rd and Division, and I appreciate that. And since we, we make modular housing in Oregon, and since we know how to green up these sites, I just want to take a couple of these things and have the, and the city and county commit to transforming them, because I think with a little ingenuity, we could turn these into not only very desirable and attractive places to live, but we could put the green value system in it and make them sustainable. And then on the CB, the CBA issue, I mean, so most of the money, the money we're talking about today is city money. And, and most of it is already governed by policies. So the housing money requires participate, requires a whole, has a whole set of strings attached to it. What I hear Lori saying is that the, the federal fund piece and the TRIMET piece, we need to be thinking about what is the community benefits component of that. I know TRIMET has federal requirements it has to meet. We're going to be coming to council in September with a report on the numbers on the CBAs that were used under the Water Bureau pilot. And we'll have a broader community discussion about how's that working? Does it need to be tailored, and other things? I think where we're probably headed is what's more, what's, what we call a community benefits plan, which is a more targeted version of a CBA. But the goal we share, and so I guess I would just close by asking our friends at TRIMET, since this is not directly implicated in what's before us today, will we have a chance to have that conversation about how to, how to bring the values behind a community benefits plan to the capital construction side?
Absolutely. You know, with, without knowing what any of the details are, we're very much eager to have those kinds of conversations, so that the benefits to the corridor are not just on the transit side. What, the details of that's still to be worked out, obviously.
Thank you.
Questions or comments?
Sorry, I am concerned about the affordable housing, because according to the chart on page twenty-eight, most of it is in the Clinton Triangle. It's not along the corridor. It's 500,000 for outside of the Clinton Triangle, and 5.5 million within the Clinton Triangle. So how, how are we going to address the concern that it should benefit outer east rather than, or as well as inner east?
I think this is on, I appreciate you pointing that out. And indeed, the Clinton Triangle is a major area of interest and focus, however, it's not the only one. One thing that I did not mention was that as we worked through the summer, and Vivian Satterfield, who spoke to you earlier from Opel, is on the panel of experts for the Inclusionary Housing Program. We're scheduled to come back to council with a construct of what the calibration of inclusionary housing requirements would likely be come September. And if you look at the residual land values in East Portland, it does not argue that you could get very many units through private development mandates, mandatory inclusionary zoning. However, I've asked staff specifically to focus on areas where transit improvements are being made, and push the envelope on the inclusionary units with the expectation that we would offset those costs more robustly for private developers in areas such as this. So that's going to tap the private market hydraulics throughout the entire length of the corridor. And I think that will be helpful. The CET is how we would pay for that. And we don't have to take title to those properties, we just need to incentivize a private developer to do it.
That's not included in the table, so I don't understand.
Right. Well, the table was, I must say, the table was done, like, before the legislature even approved inclusionary housing. And perhaps, you know, an amendment would be useful, because I'm citing tools that weren't even available to the bureau when this plan was developed.
If you remember the summary slide that I showed earlier, and this is a good catch if the table is not actually reflecting this, a big part of how we're thinking about the next five years of, of the affordable housing piece of this, is a share of the new resources that are just coming forward now, as well as programs that even since we started this planning project, housing's been able to secure through different sources, and be, been able to identify how they can target someone on the corridor. It's a five-year plan. One of the things that we thought was really critical was to give the city council a sense of the order of magnitude of cost of lift it is to even attempt to meet some objectives like this, both on the housing and the economic development side, and to fairly represent to city council sort of what we had in hand today, and then what we need to continue to work on through one means or another, to secure, to be able to follow through on this scale of effort. So that's, part of having a gap in funding at this point of a five-year plan like that is less of a reason not to try to move forward with it, but more of putting a financial goal on it, as well as a three-hundred-unit goal for the housing, as, as well as the number of businesses we hope to assist on the economic development side. You sort of have to do both to even have, know what you're shooting at. And so I just encourage folks to think of the plan and the budget in those terms. The story that the Bureau of Housing's been able, that the Housing Bureau's been able to tell now is, is representative of how much things can change over the, a period of a plan to bring more resources to the table. And then, the last piece of it is this, I encourage us to think about. The housing needs, just on the housing side, and I think it's true on the economic development side, the needs in the city and a lot of the neighborhoods are way bigger than what we're talking about just in this action plan. Much larger than, you know, you even really see just in this quarter. The needs are big in the quarter, but there's more beyond that. We're focusing on this quarter now because we think there's something to leverage with this transit investment. What's the right sort of proportional scale to try to capture that moment of leverage? There are other places in the city where we can mount similar efforts, where we just don't have a transit project to try to leverage. So this isn't the only action that we need to be thinking of in terms of housing and economic development in the city. This is a scale of effort tied to making the most of what's going to be a big capital investment as well, if the project goes forward, if it can come back and demonstrate the transit advantages that we think it's going to have. And there, that's going to have to be presented to the community and satisfy those concerns, as well as come back through city council.
Joe, I, this, I think it's good to have stretched goals. I'm, I'm, I might, part of me says, I'm not sure we've stretched enough, but it's, but it is, it is, it is a sober goal. And you guys can't say this, but in addition to all the tools that Kurt has rattled off, that are a tribute to the good work that Kurt and Dan have done to bring these things forward and give us additional... forward and give us additional tools in our toolkit, it is possible that the Portland voters are going to give us another tool later this year. And that's another pot of money that can be tapped to meet our goals here. And I think stretch goals in this area makes sense.
So this resolution says that we're going to adopt this plan as non-binding city policy, but then it goes on to resolve that, well, certainly, we do gratefully acknowledge the excellent work and dedication of the steering committee. The third bit resolved, though, says that we will work with regional partners to implement the local action plan and to continue participating in the broader Powell-Division Transit and Development Project. We haven't had a public hearing at this council where we've had a lot of robust community input to say, do they even want this? So what I'm hearing from the community today is if we do the project, then this is what's necessary to make it work for the community at a minimum. My understanding is that we will still at some point have a public hearing on, are we going to support doing this project?
Yes. The schedule shows that the locally preferred alternative, which is the transit piece of this, is supposed to come out of the steering committee this fall, Commissioner. And then a public hearing on that will take place in front of the City Council after it's come out as a recommendation from the project. So a lot of the issues that were talked about today, and the technical analysis that the community was even saying it needs to see to know how it's going to come down on this project, will come into place between now and those decision points, and it will be at a hearing in front of City Council. And there will be some form of local match that goes into the project. So you have, the City Council has several points of leverage over the future of this project. The community action plan is at least letting the community and the steering committee know now, if the project goes forward, here's what we think, you know, we've set as the objective. And, you know, I'm from the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, I like to think that actions stem from these plans, but with or without the transit project, the metro money is on the table to begin this work in the current fiscal year, and the work is necessary. So it's worthwhile to move forward, and we're appreciative of that contribution to this.
Thank you. And I'm still concerned about the community organizer position and how it interacts with the neighborhood associations, as well as with Metro Portland. So since we only have the metro money for this year, am I assured that the position will be hired as a limited-term position?
I guess I'm going to ask Kate to confirm that from PDC, since that part of the metro grant is going to be, directly go to PDC and the MPI districts.
Right. Just to clarify, the money is not being hired to add another position at PDC. We're working with Division Midway to have that position at their office, and it'll be hired by them, managed by them. And so that is, the plans are already in the works with that, with the grant money and with the PDC E-zone money that we, community contribution money.
So Division Midway is aware that it's a limited-term position, we're not guaranteeing funding for the full five years?
I believe they are, yes.
See, Lori nodding, so. And I know that your Division Midway and indeed, all of the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiatives are working well with the communities. So I just want to make sure that when we have a structure for community involvement, it gets used in the office of neighborhood involvement, that we are coordinating it.
Right, absolutely.
Thank you.
What's the action? This is a resolution?
It's a resolution, and obviously, then the LPA comes back this fall. So that's the process.
Thank you.
Okay? Any further discussion before we take action on the resolution? Then let's do that, please.
Saltzman?
Well, thank you to our Metro councilors and to everybody else who's participated in this Portland, I'm sorry, the Division Powell Local Action Plan. I think it's a good plan, good questions about affordable housing, land use, and how we do this with buses quickly. And it's definitely a corridor in need of a lot of attention. So thank you. Bye.
Novick?
I want to thank everybody who's been working on this plan. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Ellen. And thanks to Apano and the Division Midway Alliance, my favorite Cold, World War II Alliance, for their work on this. I appreciated what Lori said about this is an organic and iterative process. We're adopting this plan to make it clear that we understand that the community wants to be sure that a plan like this is implemented, and if it's not, then the serious question is whether we should go ahead with the transit project at all. But as Lori said, it's not necessary to say, we're going to tell TRIMET to stop working on this plan until we know that we have precise funding for each, to stop working on the transit project until we know we have the funding committed for every element of this plan. This is one step in a process, and we've been talking about what the next steps are going to be. I am delighted to hear Director Krieger say that, given the new tools we have to address housing needs, he feels pretty comfortable that we should be able to come up with funding to address the housing component of this plan. And granted, 300 units is not enough, but, I mean, I think that a year ago, we probably would have said, well, maybe we are going to ask TRIMET to stop because we don't know how we're going to get money for any significant investment in housing. One thing I want to note is that we also have heard from folks in the community that in addition to investment in affordable housing, they'd like to see stronger tenant protections. And obviously, our ability to adopt tenant protections is limited by state law, but we have a legislative session coming up. We have a work session planned on tenant protections in the council next month, so hopefully, actually, no, in September. So hopefully, we'll be able to show some progress on that as well. So I think that this is rather a new thing. And I think that, Commissioner Fisher was asking earlier what the analogy is, I'm not sure that there is an analogy where before we're going ahead with the transit project, we're talking with the community about unintended consequences and coming up with a plan to address those unintended consequences and making it clear, as Commissioner Fritz said, that our commitment to the transit project is dependent on our ability to anticipate and address those unintended consequences. So I think that it's hard to come up with an analogy, but hopefully, we will be, think this way in future projects, and it may not be that there's some rigid formula that X percent of the money spent in a transit project goes to mitigation. I think it'll be a case-by-case determination, as this has been. So thank you all very, very much. Thanks to the Metro folks, thanks to Commissioner Stacy. I'm pleased to vote aye.
These projects do become very complicated with multiple jurisdictions, all doing their best and including citizens from multiple jurisdictions as well. So I appreciate that, and thanks very much to the steering committee and all of the staff work. This is actually the second project we've done like this because we did the Barber Transit Plan, looking at the concept of land use before we're actually sure of what's happening on Barber. And before that, we did the Lombard, St. John's Lombard Plan, and then we did the Sandy Boulevard Hollywood Plan. In those last two, we haven't funded many of the recommendations that were aspirational in the plan, and we haven't actually funded a lot of the things that we're hoping to get done in Barber. Of course, in any kind of planning, you do the plan so that we agree on what the aspirations are, and then you go seek funding. But I want to make it very clear that I'm not sure that there is funding within the city for the items, the action items that are in this plan, and I'm willing to support it as the roadmap for how to get there. We're going to have to think very carefully when we do have the locally preferred alternative, how do we get all of the other jurisdictions to pay their fair share and to make sure that collectively we can fund it? Because that's, as we know with affordable housing, it's a metro-wide project, problem, and challenge, and yet a lot of the burden falls on Portland's taxpayers. So with those provisos, I will vote aye. Thank you.
Yes. Well, this was, I just was looking at the agenda, and this was originally scheduled for an hour. We're now two hours into the discussion, and it's normally at this point that we look to find the person who's responsible for it, and the recriminations happen off camera. I actually am left feeling that this has not only been a very stimulating and thoughtful and interesting discussion for two hours, but I look forward to further discussions. And I don't want to begin by thanking everyone who took time out this afternoon to come shape this discussion. I think this is one of the best discussions we've had of this kind. And since we're sort of making it up as we go along, I guess, since there's not much of a precedent, I have found this incredibly interesting and provocative, so thank you to everybody. We're struggling with, and part of the problem, a definition. We're calling this a goal, a framework, a roadmap. And I think what you're hearing is, because we have done big planning exercises in the past and have fallen short in terms of meeting the goals, council doesn't want to just embrace this and say, you know, you can assume that this will be funded and we're going to get it all done. But to use the analogy that Commissioner Fritz did a while ago about East Portland Action Plan, while we haven't funded everything in the Action Plan, and while there's a lot of stuff that is to be addressed, for me, the great virtue of that process is that every year, the community comes forward and says, these are our priorities, and we have a mechanism to actually act on them. And without that, we don't have the focus, and therefore, we're, what did Tom Potter once say, if you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there? And so I like the fact that it gives us focus. And my expectation is that at each budget year over the next five years, housing and planning and transportation, everyone else is going to come forward and give us an update and tell us where the delta is, and we'll have a chance to say, well, you know, Dan, let's put some more HIF in this, or so-and-so, let's bring some discretionary money. So it's going to focus our attention. I'm cautiously skeptical about whether we can fund this, but I also, my heart tells me this should be a floor, not a ceiling. And I know that's contradictory, but I don't know that we have enough housing units here. And the one piece, and Kurt would be, I'd be remiss if I didn't say this, I'm glad they're all going to be below 60%. I want to see the lion's share go to 0 to 30 and then match the demonstrated need within the corridor. And if you and Commissioner Saltzman come back and say that's families and two-bedroom units, that's fine with me. If it's single adults and seniors, that's fine with me. But I want to focus on where the greatest need is, and that's below 30%. So with those caveats and with the expectation that we'll have an annual process to evaluate this, either as a freestanding meeting or as through the budget, I'm pleased to support this, and I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of the community. And I'm hearing that there's stuff here that does not have unanimous approval, and there are some trade-offs. And I guess I'm going to go forward on this because I think this gives us a better chance to getting to yes than not doing anything. And I also think that we're at risk in government generally about spending too much time getting to no and not to yes. We got to start somewhere. So I'm going to support this and thank everyone who brought it forward. Bye.
Who else?
Well, this has been a good discussion, so I'm glad that no one minds that it took two hours instead of one. And I want to commend the staff and our partners at Metro, elected officials and staff there and TRIMET, and our citizen leaders in this council for a good discussion. And I found this deliberation this afternoon both heartening and very concerning, deeply disturbing on a second level. Let me talk about both. It's heartening because this is a thoughtful, inclusive, almost painstaking planning process for a good transit project, and I'm happy about that. And we have a couple of them underway at the moment, and they're both good projects, and I think they both are worthy of moving forward. So that's good news. I'm happy about that, and I'm happy that we're, this year, are going to continue work on both of those corridors. On the other level, I'm pretty concerned because, you know, we are growing at 1,000 people a month in this city, and we are livable and prosperous in large part because of the transit and bicycle investments that have been made in previous decades. And the pace at which we are adding the infrastructure that we will need for mobility in this city is insufficient to that rate of growth. And as both a commissioner and a consultant, and then as mayor, I've had the chance to frequently triangulate what Portland's doing against other cities, and that's another reason why I'm concerned. Phoenix is, at the moment, investing over the next 30 years, $17.5 billion in bus rapid transit projects. Let me say that again, $17.5 billion in bus projects. That's not the count, that's part of a $31.5 billion, three-decade program. The city that we love to gier at, Phoenix, is doing this. They're not alone. And cities across the country are investing massively in the mobility that's necessary because the world is moving to cities, and the world is moving to other cities just like it's moving to Portland. So the pace at which we're moving is insufficient to the task that is in front of us, and the financial resources that we have at hand are woefully insufficient. So that's a big deal, and that's a big problem. And we, as a community, and as a region, and actually as a state, need to address that problem because, again, we're living on the investments of the past, and we've run the string on the, we've run the trap line on the financial system that we have today to be able to pay for things. Commissioner Novick's done great work on one of those fronts over the course of the last year and a couple of years, and we've made some progress, but I'm pretty concerned about that. So yes, measure twice, at least twice, cut once, do good projects, that's what we're doing here. But as a community, we have to figure out how to do them faster and bolder if we're going to keep up with the transportation demands and the livability needs of the city over the next couple of decades. So don't want to depress everybody, but I'm concerned about that, and I think that's a big-picture issue for all of us to grapple with. So by all means, let's get this one done, let's stay on schedule, let's get the LPA approved this year, let's make the case to the Clinton administration for our funding under the Federal Transit Partnership that's worked so well for Portland, and then figure out how to do the next ones even faster. Good job, everyone. Well done. Aye. Thank you. Good work. Good work. Okay, let's take up our second item here, which we have before us, which is 888.
Amend towing code to allow immobilization of vehicles to give owners an opportunity to pay outstanding parking fines before a tow.
So we're going from mobility to immobility in one afternoon, Commissioner Novick.
Colleagues, what I'm asking for today is for council to give PBOT the authority to boot instead of tow. The city made a decision, I think it was in 1987, that we would not boot, we would only tow, based on the idea that when you boot, you're taking a parking space out of commission for a certain period of time. I would like to reverse that decision largely because a towing fee, which contractually is $168, is to me, an unnecessary penalty that we impose on everybody whose car we tow, which obviously is particularly burdensome for people with low incomes. I've said before that ideally, I'd love to have a system for traffic fines like Finland does, where the penalty you pay is related to your income. Because a $100 penalty can be no deterrent at all to a rich person and a crushing blow to a poor person. Unfortunately, unlike, or some people might say fortunately, unlike in Finland, our parking enforcement officers and our police don't have immediate access to people's tax returns. So it is not practical to have penalties that directly correlate to people's income. But we can avoid imposing unnecessary penalties. And I think that the towing charge is an unnecessary penalty because if people's cars are booted, if they can, they are going to take the action necessary to pay their fines and get their car free. It's also more humane to boot rather than tow because at least if your car is booted, it's there, and you can go and get your essential belongings out of it, et cetera, rather than wait until you catch a cab or something out to the towing place. So booting gives people an opportunity to pay their overdue parking citations and before incurring additional towing and vehicle storage fees. Folks will have the option to see a judge, pay off their overdue citations, or set up a payment plan with the court before access to their vehicle is taken away entirely and more fees are imposed. And we've got Dave Benson here, who's been working with the court to determine what PBOT can do, you know, consistent with what they can do with us, and he'll answer any questions, give more information.
Hey, good afternoon, guys.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Dave Benson. I'm the Parking Group Manager at the Bureau of Transportation. I'm going to echo just briefly what Commissioner Novick said. I'm here today with my colleague Donald Hunter from the Parking Enforcement Division to request that you amend city code to authorize police officers, parking enforcement officers and others authorized by council to immobilize vehicles, more commonly known as booting, in addition to the authority we already have to tow a vehicle. This ordinance also makes some minor changes This ordinance also makes some minor changes in code language and reflect our current situation in 2016. As you know, a judge can sign a warrant to seize a vehicle for unpaid parking tickets when the vehicle has six or more delinquent citation and/or owes more than $500 in parking fines. Adding booting to the parking enforcement toolkit has a number of advantages. First, as Commissioner Novick noted, there's approximately $170 fee to tow the vehicle, and if the owner doesn't retrieve their vehicle in four hours or less, they're charged with another $25 storage charge. So in addition to the fees they owe, there's an additional $200 charge, and as Commissioner Novick noted, they're deprived of all their property inside the vehicle. By having the option to boot a vehicle for up to 36 hours, it gives the owner the opportunity to retrieve their personal possessions, pay their delinquent parking tickets, or set up a payment plan with the court. Afterwards, we'll come out and remove the boot and release the vehicle back to them without additional inconvenience or additional expense, which is especially attractive for those persons with limited incomes. And Donald will talk about the procedure.
And I'm Donald Hunter, Parking Enforcement. So we will only boot vehicles Monday through Thursday from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And the length of the time the boot will be on the vehicle is 36 hours. The reason why we won't boot on Friday is we're giving the citizen 32 hours, 36 hours to make contact with the courthouse, and the courthouse is closed over the weekend. When an officer locates a vehicle that we -- appears to be a tag warrant, our dispatchers will contact the courthouse to confirm that it is a valid tag warrant. If it is a valid tag warrant, parking enforcement will boot the vehicle, leaving a warning sticker, leaving a warning sticker on the vehicle. The warning sticker informs the citizen that the vehicle has been immobilized and do not attempt to drive. It also provides information on how to have the boot removed by contacting the courthouse. Our dispatchers will inform the courthouse that we have immobilized a vehicle and provide the courthouse with the location of the vehicle. We will give the owner of the vehicle 36 hours to make contact with the courthouse to pay their outstanding citations or make payments arrangements with the courthouse. Once a vehicle goes -- once a citizen goes to the courthouse and pay or make arrangements, the courthouse will contact our dispatchers and to inform them that the vehicle is okay to be released. We would then dispatch one of our officers to the location and to release the vehicle within one hour after the courthouse informs parking enforcement. If the owner does not make contact with the courthouse to pay the bill amount after 36 hours, parking enforcement will unboot the vehicle and have it towed. And what I'd like to show you now, we have two different types of boots that we have in place. We have a smaller boot for smaller vehicles, and this is just the illustration of how the smaller boot works. And it's pretty quick and simple. The next video is the larger boot for larger vehicles.
All right, here we go. So that's the end of our presentation. If you have any questions.
What happens if you are preoccupied and you don't notice that you've got a boot on your car and you try to drive it?
It's going to damage the vehicle. It's going to damage, probably just flatten the tire. And there's that sign. This is going to be on the driver's side window, driver's window. So when they go to open the car door, they're not going to miss that.
It's stuck on the window?
Stuck on the window. It's sticky.
So it wouldn't wash off if it was raining?
No, we talked about that. No, we're told it will not, and we're testing that right now.
What's the profile right now of the person that has six or more parking tickets and for whom a warrant is issued?
Profile?
So just give us some numbers. How often does that happen annually?
Well, we tow about five cars a day. There are 4,764 license plates or vehicles that are delinquent right now in the city of Portland, that have six or more tickets or $500 or more in fines. How many was it? 4,764.
And do we know, do we have, collect any data on who those people are?
No, we don't. We haven't, we haven't run the registrations to find out. I mean, we, the court knows who they are, but by virtue of the registration, they've been notified by the court. The State of Oregon Department of Revenue attempts to contact them to collect the fines, but I don't have the demographics.
All right. Well, if equity is in part a goal here, how do we know these are not just irresponsible people that just don't pay fines versus people for whom paying parking or paying the fine is going to be a hardship?
We don't know that.
Well, we currently, for a tag warrant from parking citations, it's a tag warrant, and we tow the vehicle, which adds another $168 for the tow plus $25 if they don't retrieve it after four hours.
Are we charging someone for the additional 36 hours that they're parked?
No.
No, there's no booting charge and no boot removal charge.
No other citations either.
And in other cities that have done this, like New York, and let's take a peer city, what lessons have we, what have you learned from their experience?
Well, I can tell you about Philadelphia. They, the study's some years old, but they found their collection rate more than doubled because of the visibility of the boot sends a message. Now, right now, we tow a car, the car just simply disappears, tow truck comes along, takes car away, and nobody knows what's going on. Where in the case of a boot, it's something that walking down the street you may see, and what they found is their compliance more than doubled.
Among people who had been booted or not yet booted?
Or not yet booted that saying to themselves, maybe I should go to the court and take care of this.
That's encouraging. And I also think what's, one of the things that's compelling about this is that someone may have something in their trunk they need. It could be medication. It could be identification. I mean, some people put all their safe, for safekeeping, they put things in their trunk.
Laptop, whatever they need for work.
And so that's an additional hardship.
Yes.
Are we, is there a risk that we'll be taking up too many spaces in our inventory?
Now, we're only, we've only initially purchased about five boots because we, the most we've ever towed in a day is seven. It averages three to five. So we're starting with five. We're starting very modestly.
And so what's the logic of starting this in Eastmoreland? Why have you chosen that as your first rollout?
It just seemed like the place to go.
And no charge for the boot, no charge for the extra time, and so what you're saving is the towing charge?
Correct, for the citizen.
And also, my sense is that when we tow cars, sometimes there's actually some damage to the car that's caused by the towing and the storage.
Possibilities, yeah.
Have we had any, Steve, has anyone weighed in against this?
Not to my knowledge.
I want to just put down one marker, which is, I think the equity argument here and the fairness argument is pretty compelling. I don't find those arguments compelling when we're going after DUI and other things, and we say that there's a differential ability to pay. Because I think, I think there's a huge difference between not paying a fee for parking your car, which is a, which we treat as a low-level offense and for which we get a fine, and engaging in conduct which puts other people's lives at risk. And I have a slightly different analysis of the, of the equity lens piece on people who put other people's lives at risk. So I, I'm not, I'm going to support this, but not as a precedent for us to go to all of our fees and schedules and fines and apply the same logic. Because I think there are some things where we should treat people the same, whether they're rich or poor, if the effect is to tell them they cannot behave, they cannot engage in behavior which puts other people's lives at risk.
I mean, here we are continuing to treat people the same, whether they're rich or poor, which is eliminating what I saw as an unnecessary penalty, which wouldn't particularly bother other than having to go find your car.
Right, which disproportionately hurts people of limited means.
Exactly.
I find that, I'm just saying, as a preview to other discussions you're teeing up down the road, I find that less compelling in the context of someone engaging in reckless behavior, where the fine is deliberately set to both discourage and punish.
Right. Although I would say that in defense of the Finns, if you're a multimillionaire, even if you're paying a $5,000 fine for DUI, it's not enough.
I think we should probably start taking the car.
Other questions for either of these great resource people? Thank you both. Anyone want to speak on this item? If not, then it's going to move to second reading next week. Steve, good work on this. I think it's a nice and positive change. Thank you.
Thank you, David and Donald.
Thank you both very much, and we are recessed till tomorrow at 2:00 PM. That's good work. That's.